Coronavirus pandemic in accordance with Governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020 or four. Please note that in accordance with the governor's emergency order, we have provided public notice of the necessary information for accessing this meeting. Instructions are provided on our agenda and city council's website at Concord NH dot legstar dot com backslash calendar dot A S P X. We're utilizing the zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the city council have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting. And the public has access to listen and if necessary participate in a meeting through clicking on the following website address. Backslash backslash U S zero two web dot zoom dot U S slash J slash eight nine four two five nine one eight three three three. If any member of the public does not have website access and they may dial telephone number nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine and enter the webinar ID number eight four nine. Excuse me eight nine four two five nine one eight three three three. Those who want to provide public testimony and a public sharing portion of this meeting, you and you are connected to the zoom website. You may click on the hand raise hand icon in the attendee section to make requests. When it is time to appropriate, you'll be recognized by me and you can provide your testimony. For members of the public who are participating by phone, you may dial star nine to alert me that you want to testify. We will not be using the chat function in this zoom for this meeting. Please, please note that testimony is only allowed for agenda items that have been scheduled for public hearing and public participation participation is not authorized for other agenda items. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting, please call six oh three two three zero four six one nine or send an email to city council meeting at Concord NH dot gov. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. Please note that all votes are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When you state your presence at the meeting, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the rights no law. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Bouchard.
Here, I'm home in a room, no one else is in.
Mayor Boule.
I am present, I am at home and I am in a room with no one else.
Counselor Champlin.
I am present, I am in a room in my home and I am alone in the room.
Counselor Fantasy.
I am here, I'm in a room by myself, though I've been advised my children may pass through at some point, I'm hoping they will not.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
I am present, I am in my home in a room with no one else present.
Counselor Hatfield.
I am here at home in a room by myself.
Counselor Keach.
I'm home alone like.
Counselor Kennison.
I am home alone.
Counselor Credit.
I'm home in a room by myself, though my husband Bill or my son Jack may pass through.
Counselor Mattson.
I'm home in this by myself, thank you.
Counselor Nian.
Present at home, the room by myself.
Counselor Pierce.
Present at home in a room by myself.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Present at home and alone in this room.
Counselor Todd.
Here at home, no one in the room with me.
And Counselor Warner.
I'm here at home in a room by myself.
Wonderful, good to see everybody. So just a reminder to the public, if you have any questions or any trouble accessing the meeting, please call six oh three two three zero or six four nine or send an email to city council meeting at Concord NH dot gov. Please remind you to city council members, please mute yourself when you're not speaking. Please click on the hand raised icon to participate sections of your zoom screen. Also, if you're viewing in a gallery view, wave your hand in front of the camera to make sure you are heard. On your zoom screen, change your view at upper right corner from speaker view to gallery view to see all panelists. That takes us to our pledge allegiance, if you could all join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States and America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under.
I'm sorry, flag, that was terrible. Lucky we're not singing the national. Um, we have two sets a minute before us. Since we're doing these by roll call, would anybody be opposed to taking them up both at the same time?
No.
Field moves approval of both.
Second, Champlin seconds. Second by Counsel Champlin, we have the minutes of May eleventh twenty twenty and we have the minutes of May twenty eighth twenty twenty before us. Are there any suggestions, changes, comments, concerns? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Here.
Or yes.
Yes, I'm sorry, the minute, yes, for the minute.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Um, yes.
Counselor Fantasy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Yes.
Counselor Kennison. Counselor Kennison.
She seems to say yes.
Thank you. Counselor Credit.
Yes.
Counselor Mattson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you very much. Uh, with that, motion is adopted when you name it. Uh, we now have before us a consent agenda. Uh, before I take a motion, is there any, I don't have anybody who has removed any item from the consent agenda, just last minute before if you wish to do, Counsel Credit.
I think, Your Honor, I'd actually like to seal the minutes from the six o'clock meeting, the non-public session.
I'll second that. Motion's ordered, motion made and seconded duly seconded. Uh, Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Yeah.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Yes.
Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Credit.
Yes.
Counselor Mattson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner.
Yes.
Wonderful, uh, that motion is adopted. So, uh, we do have the consent agenda before us, uh, before I take a motion, as I said, I just wanted to make sure that, uh, I don't have anything I need to recommend be pulled off. Did anybody want to pull anything off? Seeing none, uh, can we get a motion, please?
Move.
Nian moved approval.
Second.
Counselor Nian moved approval, seconded by Counsel Mattson. Um, are we ready for the question? Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Yes.
Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Credit.
Yes.
Counselor Mattson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Warner.
Yes.
And with that, the motion is adopted, consent agenda approved. Um, I am pleased to report there are no public hearings this evening. Um, just a quick reminder that we'll be meeting next Monday, you have a public hearing on the budget. Um, so that's at seven o'clock because we'll be acting as the city council. And I encourage any member of the public wishing to share any ideas or thoughts that they will participate as well. Uh, we have no reports, no new business, we do have two items under listed under unfinished business, I've not been notified anybody wanted to take any off, so I'm going to keep moving unless somebody raises their hand. Seeing none, uh, that takes us to comments requests, uh, by counselors. Is there anything anybody would like to share? I have Counsel Champlin raise his hand first and then it looks like Counsel Warner.
Thank you, Your Honor, I just want to briefly commend our students at Concord High School for organizing, uh, you know, an incredibly moving and powerful march on Saturday. And also commend our police department for providing support, uh, and, uh, and assisting with that. Um, I'm an old veteran of, uh, the peace marches of the sixties and, and early seventies. And it, uh, it certainly took me back to those days, seeing that passion, that energy, uh, and, uh, and that level of commitment. Thank you, Your Honor.
Uh, Counsel Warner.
Uh, I too want to echo, uh, Counsel Champlin's comments on the protests on Saturday. It was really impressive to have that number of people in this, in the cooperation between, uh, the city police department, the state of New Hampshire. And the cooperation of everybody who participated in that event was really notable. And, uh, given, uh, some of the things that have happened around the country, um, I'm very proud of, uh, our Concord city administration, state of New Hampshire. And, uh, citizens and folks who came from outside of Concord to, who participated in that event and make their feelings known.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I also want to add my thank you to the organizers, I marched in the event and I, I also found it very moving. Um, and I wanted to ask you if you have thought about, um, whether the city council would benefit from taking advantage of the various programs and trainings that are available around unconscious bias and around diversity, equity and inclusion. Um, and if you are interested in that, I'd be happy to work with you to explore, um, opportunities for us to deepen our own understanding of these issues.
I very much appreciate that and we're going to talk about it at the end. Thank you for bringing that up. Uh, Counsel Rice Hawkins.
I just want to add my thanks as well, um, as Counsel Champlin, Counselor Hatfield, Warner said, our youth have really shown the way here and the outright call of thousands of, uh, grant state residents, both Concord and the surrounding region. Directly calling out racism and police brutality is really critically important in this moment. Um, the unfortunate, uh, murder of George Floyd has really set off, uh, a storm of events in our country that have been brewing for a long time. And it's, uh, incumbent upon us now to fulfill that pledge by doing what we can to dismantle systematic racism and police brutality. So to that end, uh, following up on Counselor Hatfield's, uh, question, I'd also like to ask if our police chief could review some of the policies that are being recommended around the country right now. Uh, the eight that can't wait policies, um, and issue some type of report that would, um, indicate how Concord is faring on those policies and whether there's things that we can do, uh, to further improve our own, um, you know, police practices and, uh, and other efforts of that nature. Thank you.
Uh, who else? What was going on, Counsel Todd, do you have anything?
No, Your Honor, I'm all set except, uh, I will echo everything that was said previously, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Counsel Grady Sexton, do you have more?
I'm sure I'd just like to, uh, follow up to on, um, Counselor Rice Hawkins' comments and say that the Public Safety Advisory Board, um, will have a meeting at the end of this month. And, um, I have worked with Counselor Bouchard and have asked that legal and, uh, the police chief, um, review some of the, uh, policies with the public in terms of the use of force with the police department.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Uh, Counsel Pierce, do you have anything?
Um, just along the same vein, I happen to speak with both the police chief and interim fire chief today on another matter, which will be coming up shortly. But I, I thank them and, um, for the, not only for the peaceful demonstration, but for them, uh, you know, as the police chief said, there were no arrests, no one was hurt, everyone was, uh, there for the right reason. And I, I think we owe a big thanks to the entire community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Fantasy. Do you have anything?
No, everybody has said all of the points I wanted to make.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Kennison, do you have anything? Counsel Kennison, do you have anything, Your Honor?
Uh, just echo what everyone else has said, I, I marched in the demonstration as well and it was extremely emotional and meaningful.
Thank you, Counsel Mattson, do you have anything?
Uh, no, I echo everybody's sentiments that we're grateful that we had a peaceful demonstration and it, uh, it should hopefully serve us, um, to show how it can be done peacefully. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Keach. All set, thank you. Uh, Counsel Credit.
Just ditto what everybody else has said and also congratulations to our police department for showing professionalism, uh, during everything that has occurred with, uh, COVID nineteen as well as the demonstrations there. They're outstanding and we really appreciate all they do for us.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Nian.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor, I guess, uh, the only thing I can add that hasn't been said already is, um, kudos to staff and general services as well for their involvement. I know there was a lot of effort put into, um, in the police department making sure it was a safe event. So, um, it really was a team effort and I don't want to say that, so thank you.
Great, um, so I just want to make a few comments, um, I'll be a little repetitive and I apologize, but just kind of want to bring home some of the things I've been thinking about. Um, once, uh, recently somebody said to me, I'm really worried about the future, you know, what are these kids going to be like? Well, all they needed to do was to, uh, see the, uh, event that took place this weekend on Saturday in the march. I found that, uh, the future's in very good hands. I, I am really confident that, uh, the next generation is going to do probably a much better job than I will have ever done. They were, um, incredibly articulate, they were wonderful in their, uh, organization and it was just so inspirational to be there and to be there with so many people from our community coming together to talk about something which quite frankly is very painful. Um, and sometimes it's very difficult to look in the mirror, I find myself, to, to really be honest with myself and, and to, um, to, to, to really want to, to be honest and to talk about this. So, um, I was, I can't thank them enough. I also want to, uh, give my deep sincere thank you to our Concord Police Department, uh, as well as general services. The, the one thing throughout, uh, all of the actions the city took was the safety of every one of those marchers. And in, from observing what had taken place across the country and other rallies in New Hampshire, uh, we were able to, um, use that knowledge to make sure that we protected all those people who wanted to exercise their, uh, free speech in march. And along those lines, the cooperation that we got with the county, with, um, the sheriff's office and other county departments, as well as the state, uh, was truly an impressive, um, how each branch and level of government can come together to, um, to really, um, do something very positive. But, um, probably much like what you reflected and, and my thoughts were, it was a wonderful day, I walked away, uh, inspired, like I said. But the next day, Sunday and today, it's really question is, well, are we just going to feel good about that one moment or are we going to actually do something about it? And the question is, what can we do? And the truth is, is sometimes I think personally, it's not what I say, it's, it's the ability to listen to others and to really listen to what other people's experiences are so that we can make better decisions, we can be better policymakers. So, as many of you brought up, I've been working with, um, Counselor Grady Sexton as the Chair of the Public Works Committee, um, Public Works, I apologize, public safety, thank you, sorry. Um, and we have been, uh, working with the manager's office, uh, police department and others. And there is a willingness to, um, to really, as, as some of you recognize, to, it's always healthy to review, to evaluate, um, to see what we might be doing better, how we can correct things. I'm not necessarily suggesting we're doing anything wrong now, but I always think it's, it's worthwhile, it's always worthwhile to, to review and to see what we can do better. So they will be focusing on that. Um, Counsel Hatfield, one of the things that, uh, I was encouraged to do was to form a new committee to look at things in the community. And quite frankly, uh, the, the conclusion I came to was there is absolutely no need to form a new committee. There are already wonderful committees in this community who are doing really positive things. Um, so I, I, my goal is to bring all those other organizations who are already doing things together, bring them together with the city council. I would like to include the school district in that conversation, I think education is a critical part of how we move forward. I think issues like housing are critically important, uh, issues like financial security, uh, workforce issues, these are all part of things I think that we need to be discussing in the, in the community. So I think it's going to be a broad ranging discussion, much more than just policing, uh, if we're really going to be honest with ourselves and we're going to move the needle to, to, to be, to make a difference. So that's a lot to kind of put on the table, but, um, over the next, and, and it becomes very difficult, the fact that we can't meet in person, I know that. Um, I'm, I'm going to do my best to, to use the technology we have to bring people together. But, um, uh, I think that when discussing these issues, being face to face is so much more powerful than, than a zoom call. So hopefully we're at some point going to be able to get together to have this discussion, even if it's with a park and we can social distance and do those things. But I think it's really important we come together on multiple levels, not just zoom calls and cities, but actually interact with one another. So I'm going to be asking you all to participate. Um, I know you have all indicated me in one way or another, I've had emails or texts and such that you, you all want to. And I, and I'm incredibly impressed with, uh, each one of you who have reached out and I can't tell you how much I appreciate it because we truly are, when we talk about all in together, we really are all in this one together. So, um, we can do better and, um, I, I, I'll stop there, but we, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna make a difference. I, I don't see if you'll let, so, um, we can't let this just stop on one day and one march. I'll stop there. Uh, Counsel Fantasy, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so just two points I would suggest. One, um, kind of going to what, uh, Counselor, uh, Rice Hawkins spoke about earlier, I think what's really important is going to be transparency about what are the policies that our police force are following. Uh, I, I'm not aware of anything at this point, uh, that would be, that, that we're doing that is incorrect. But I think it's really important to make sure the public is aware of what our policies are so that they can understand how. of what our policies are so that they can understand how we engage. The second piece, kind of going to what Counselor Hatfield suggested. You know, I had the luxury and the benefit of participating in the new counselor orientation this year. Perhaps as part of that, we could include some sort of implicit bias training, which I think might be very useful for us.
All excellent suggestions. I'm going to call on each and every one of you to participate, so. Thanks. Counsel Kinnison, you have your hand.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think it's difficult for us sometimes to look into the mirror and not recognize white privilege. And I think we need to do a lot of work in looking at ourselves and understanding what's happening. We can't put ourselves in the shoes of the black population, but we can work to understand. And a book that I have read that I found very helpful in looking at white privilege was, I think it's Raised, Growing Up White in a Racist Society. It's a wonderful book that I would recommend to anyone because it's what we don't know about ourselves that's important to look at. Thank you.
Counsel Jennings?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to second Counsel Fennessey's comments on transparency. I think that's really critical right now. When I've had an opportunity to sit down with leadership at the Concord Police Department and inquire about their, how they interact with our new American community and other people of color, I've been very impressed with the degree, the intensity and the commitment to that outreach that I've heard about. But I think that's something that most people don't know or many people in the community don't know about. I was listening today to a commentator talking about society being a social, being a compact, a social compact that works when everybody feels that they have an equal stake in that compact. But how when some portions of our society feel that they have the short end of the stick or when they're not treated with equity and with justice, the social compact starts to unravel, which I think, and I agree, is part of what we've seen in other communities. So I think it's really important for us to embark upon this initiative that you've just announced. And I thank you for your leadership in taking the bull by the horns and moving us down this path.
Thank you, everyone. Anybody else? Mr. Manager, the floor is yours. What would you like to share?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The event on Saturday was very well done by the organizers. And as you mentioned, the state police, I think, did a great job working with the Department of Transportation and the county offices. So it was really, the emergency operations center was in play to check on things. And we ended up dealing with things like kayakers in the river and high winds. So that's, so, you know, it was refreshing to deal with that. Carlos and his team, the guy, Newberry, the interim fire chief. So I look forward to working with all of you and our whole staff has really come forward to want to make sure that we don't feel like we're, you know, up in northern New England, you could feel very isolated from the rest of the country. And then sometimes that's comforting. But other times, you want to make sure that you're staying up to speed with what's going on in the rest of the country. And I think Concord City Council, over the past 10 or 20 years, has really provided a lot of leadership to the state in terms of dealing with the issues. And I think this is another one that I think we can also. So we look forward to working with everybody.
Mr. Manager, I just noticed that the development director, Ms. Peg, has her hand raised. I don't know if there's something. Okay, maybe not.
Counsel Rice Hawkins?
Yeah. And thanks again to city staff and the police department for all their work on Saturday. City manager, would you mind just taking a moment to share with people who may be listening in the use of some of the general services trucks downtown? I know you and I had a conversation that some community members were concerned about that and why we use those. Your Honor, me.
On your behalf, mistress. Thank you. And actually, those were state or New Hampshire Department of Transportation trucks. They donated, so to speak, the trucks and 10 drivers all day for those. And the idea was, in working with the organizers, the idea was, what we've seen across the country is people driving into crowds and on purpose or accidentally, and then being surrounded by large groups, and then sometimes panicking or whatever else is going through their mind. So when we put this together, the thought was, wouldn't it? And remember, we wanted to make sure there was nobody really parking in the area that was going to be quartered off down by the state house. So, you know, post those so people wouldn't park there, then keep people out of there from driving through. And because a lot of people would just naturally on a Saturday morning. And then move them out of the way when the marchers came through. Allow them to go, allow the marchers to go through safely. And then if necessary, close in behind so that nobody could drive into a crowd. So it was really done as a security measure, basically, what was going on. Yeah, it was that. Center Street that also used those vehicles to block other lanes of traffic coming up from Louden Road or from North Main so that the folks walking would obviously feel safer when they're getting out onto the street. Because we knew people would not walk single file along the sidewalk. People were going to take up the whole street. And we think it worked out quite well. But thank you for asking that question.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, moves us along to our suspense items. Can I get a motion to suspend our roles to take up suspense one and two?
They're moved.
Second.
Both are made. Second, to take up suspense one and two. Madam Clerk, if you could go over please.
Counsel Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counsel Chaplin?
Yes.
Counsel Fennessey?
Yes.
Counsel Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counsel Hatfield?
Yes.
Counsel Keach?
Yes.
Counsel Kinnison?
Yes.
Counsel Kretovic?
Yes.
Counsel Matson?
Yes.
Counsel Naim?
Yes.
Counsel Pierce?
Yes.
Counsel Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Counsel Todd?
Yes.
And Counsel Warner?
Yes.
Okay, very much. So we have before five items to discuss. Madam Clerk, I'm just going to read it, make it easier. Resident Communication of Westing City Council consider adopting an ordinance that would restrict the use of fireworks within the city of Concord. I'm going to refuse myself and not participate as my office has a fireworks client. So I'm going to turn this over to Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this something we need to vote on or send to the Public Safety Committee?
I would ask for discussion and a motion.
I think I'd like the motion to send it to the Public Safety Committee.
I'm not.
That's in seconds?
Discussion first, then I would.
If I may, Mayor Protem?
Yes.
I'm the one bringing this forward. If the council will indulge me, I have a few things to go through regarding this subject. Hopefully, you've all seen this letter that has come in. So I won't go over that again. So may I proceed?
Please.
I did receive a call on Saturday, May 30th, about 9:45 PM from a resident very upset about fireworks going off in her North State Street neighborhood. Again, you've seen the letter. I have learned a lot more about fireworks in the last week than I guess I ever wanted to know. But I've learned that this has been an ongoing issue within the city, and it's come forward a number of times. But with four new city councilors, including myself, maybe it's time that we have the pleasure of discussing it. So first of all, I did a little research, and I looked up our noise ordinance. And for those of you that are not familiar, the number one issue, noise is prohibited. It says, quote, "It shall be unlawful for any person to make, continue, or cause to be made or continued and excessive unnecessarily loud noise, which either annoys, disturbs, injures, or endangers the comfort, repose, health, peace, or safety of others within the limits of the city." Now, I went through the ordinance. There is no mention of fireworks. There's mention of construction equipment and so on and so forth. As you, and there's no time limit on the limits. There's no timeframes when it comes to fireworks, but there are with construction vehicles. So when I look at that letter from this resident, there's a couple of things that stuck out at me. And number one, it's not only the issue of noise. I believe this to be a safety issue in a couple of different places. Not only are homes being hit, in some cases, by fireplaces, fireworks, and it happens to me here in my neighborhood, but it's also a safety issue when people go out and try to find out where the fireworks are being set off. One of the things that prompted this woman to call me was they had called the police to say that the fireworks were going off, and they were told by dispatch that there were no police available to go out and look for fireworks. And I certainly agree and say that without prejudice. So in looking at this, talking with the city manager, the police chief, the fire chief, and with the city solicitor, what I am suggesting is that perhaps we look into a permit. I've talked with Counselor Grady Sexton. I know this has been discussed several times through the Public Safety Committee. I'm not sure that that's where it resides. And I will leave that to Counselor Grady Sexton to comment on that. But what I am asking for is that the ordinance be drafted to make fireworks still permissible in Concord, but with the restrictions to the form of a permit and to ask that to be presented to a public hearing at the July 13th meeting of the city council. I researched some other cities and towns and just to see what they're doing. And as RSA 160 colon C allows the cities to do what, pretty much what they like, either be permissible, permissible with restrictions, or prohibit them altogether. For instance, the city of Dover requires a permit, as do the cities of Portsmouth, the town of Charlestown, Goffstown, Deerfield, Durham, Keene, and Lebanon, and several other towns. Others have prohibited the discharge of fireworks completely, including the city of Manchester, Nashua, Berlin, Exeter, and Hennecker. I researched some of the municipalities who permit fireworks, but with restrictions in the form of permits or with allowable days or timeframes. For instance, Enfield, New Hampshire, allows fireworks on Fridays, Saturdays, New Year's Eve, July 4th, and Labor Day up until 10:30 PM. In Franklin, fireworks are prohibited between the hours of 9:30 PM and noon. Personally, I like fireworks as much as the next person. I've been known to discharge many in a safe manner, but on 20 rural acres of land that I own in Vermont. I love the aerials. I love the spinners. I love the parachutes, the roman candles, all those things that go with it. But in the interest of the personal safety of our citizens and their property, and as our city continues to grow and with urban sprawl, if you will, that I think it's reasonable to require that permits be required to discharge consumer fireworks, much the same as burn permits are today. So I will leave it at that. And after discussion, if it's proper, I would like to make a motion. If you would rather, I would make that motion now.
We have a couple of questions here, Counselor. It's up to you. Would you like to make the motion now? And if you get a second, discuss it, or we can keep further.
I'd like to hear from the city manager.
Well, we have three counselors with questions, but if we do those.
I would just go to point out who had their hands up. I didn't see, don't know if Counsel, Mayor Protem can see the hands?
I see three so far.
Let me see what I see. Okay.
I'm at a bit of a loss. Would you like me to make the motion now to see if it's second and go from there?
Yes, and then we can further discuss it.
Okay. Then I move that an ordinance be drafted to make fireworks permissible in Concord, but with the restriction through the form of a permit and to have that ordinance be presented for public hearing at the July 13th, 2020 city council meeting.
There are second? Second, Hatfield. Thank you. So the motion has been made. Is there discussion? Counselor, not had your hand up?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Protem. I wish I could have spoken before, but ultimately, I think I'm going to make a different proposal to recognizing several of the key concerns that Counsel Pierce had mentioned. You know, notably, this has been discussed multiple times here in front of the council. And each time, we have walked away without actually going to an ordinance for a multitude of reasons. But there are four new councils. It is a good discussion to have. Counsel Pierce did mention a noise ordinance. Well, that's correct. We do have a noise ordinance. And it is difficult to enforce, but it's not a fireworks prohibition. Wouldn't be any easier to enforce necessarily the noise ordinance. Relative to the permit system, I also believe that is also going to be challenging to enforce. Really, what I think would be the best approach to this in light of the fact of the prior discussions, as well as the issues with the permitting system, is to actually have our legal department take a look at what we currently have in place to help us map out what that best solution might be. It may very well be a permit system. It may very well be an ordinance that's different than anything that we've contemplated. You know, but in saying this, that's also a nod to the work that Counsel Grady Sexton's Public Safety Committee has done. And I don't want to burden that committee. So really, based upon my experience and what I would encourage the council to consider, is to not look at a permitting system just yet. But let's have legal, let's have our city solicitor take a look at this and come back to us with a recommendation as to what the best course of action would be. And I'll leave it at that and listen to others.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Keach, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. I really think this should be referred to the Safety Committee for discussion. And it's a little complicated, but it's not something we should vote on tonight.
Thank you. Counsel Rice Hawkins, did you have your hand up?
I did, thank you. For similar reasons, I'm also going to support sending it to Public Safety. Although I do understand the urgency for this constituent and that neighborhood. So it sounds like Public Safety will be meeting at the end of the month anyway, and will have a very big agenda around Black Lives Matter. But I do think that it would be a good time for public discussion with a goal of having this resolved in the next couple of months. I do note that in the letter we got that some of the concerns were safety concerns. So law size and things were referenced as well. And while I'm not in agreement with the sample law size suggested by the concerned member of the community, I do think that there is some, you know, permitting or things of that nature that I would be willing to explore.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Kretovic, you have your hand up?
I do, but I will yield to Counsel Grady Sexton first as the Chair of the Public Safety Committee and then follow.
Counsel Grady Sexton, I didn't see your hand up.
Well, that's fine. Thank you, Mayor Protem. I think that although there are new counselors at the table now, I think that the Public Safety Advisory Board has very thoroughly vetted this issue time and time again. I would recommend that the new counselors go back and look at the recommendations and the work that has been done by the Public Safety Advisory Board. And I would recommend that if the motion and the intent is to look at any sort of permitting process, that we start with the legal department and that this issue that we start with the legal department and that this issue come back to the full council. I think the work's already been done.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Todd?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to heartily endorse what Counselor Grady Sexton just said and also Counselor Nyhan. I actually sat on the Public Safety Committee while this issue was being discussed, and I can confirm what Counselor Grady Sexton just said, that in fact, it was indeed discussed heartily. We had lots of information provided at the time, including information from the police department. And I also kind of agree with Counselor Nyhan's assessment in that if you were to institute a permitting system, I would assume that the very good intentions of my colleague Counselor Pierce are to, for public safety and the public nuisance aspects of this. But I would question whether or not a permitting process actually could solve any of that because you still have the issue of, even with the noise ordinance, someone will call, they'll say someone is shooting fireworks. By the time the police arrive, the culprits are gone. If you have a permit, people aren't going to get the permit. They're going to shoot the fireworks. By the time you call the police, the culprits will be gone. So, and these are some of the issues that I think the Public Safety Board also considered when they made their determination a few years back. So with that, I would reiterate that my recommendation is also to go to the legal department, and I think that might be the best approach for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Fennessy, your hand is up? Counselor Fennessy?
Thank you. So I just have a couple of questions as one of the new counselors. One, is it possible for the city manager or legal to provide to us the relevant minutes from when the Public Safety Board previously considered this issue to perhaps get some of us up to speed with what you've already addressed? And I guess my second question would be, does the city solicitor think it's appropriate for a referral at this point? Is there additional resources that he would need before he would be able to take up this engagement?
City manager?
The answer to the first question is yes, and Mr. Kennedy's on the line, so he can talk to that. Generally, that's why under, when you do suspense items, you usually make some sort of referral or have a full discussion on it. But it's just past practice. Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, we did have this matter brought before the Public Safety Advisory Board and the City Council back in 2015. I believe a report came from my office in February 2015, and the council ultimately voted not to adopt any ordinance in May of 2015. So there was definitely a significant amount of time, energy, and effort on behalf of the council and the Public Safety Advisory Board relative to whether or not this city should adopt fireworks ordinance. Based upon my review of the report, we provided the city council with information regarding what other towns and cities were doing relative to, as Counselor Pierce stated, permitting or outright prohibiting, or the hour restrictions relative to the restrictions relative to fireworks within those municipalities as may be applied here in the city. After review of that, the council, in the public hearing, the council ultimately decided not to adopt an ordinance. And I can make that report available to this council. The Public Safety Advisory Board minutes are available online, but certainly we can make all of those readily available to every member of the city council.
Thank you. Counselor Fennessy, do you have further questions?
I do not. Thank you.
Counselor Kretovic, do you have a question still?
I do. Thank you, Mayor Protem. You know, it wasn't that long ago, maybe two weeks, I received an email from a constituent that was concerned about the sound of motorcycles, that they were extremely loud and bothersome, especially in the closer neighborhoods. And it's not really something you can enforce, much like Counselor Todd was saying. It drives by, it's gone, but it's certainly an interruption. I would reiterate what Counselor Nyhan had said, that sending this to the legal department may be the better choice at this time. My concern is that in 2015, when this came before the council, there was a lot of public input and not a lot of people that were in favor of putting this in place. And so while it ultimately is the decision of the council, the public plays a significant role in this conversation. And if we're going to put something together and put it before a public hearing in July, is that really going to be time for people to have an opportunity to review what's being considered and also have an opportunity to weigh in? We've had multiple council meetings now for the past several months, an entire budgeting season, where there has been little input from the public because of the current situation. I would hate to have us rush to any kind of decision when we know historically this has had a lot of public input. And my consideration would be send it to legal, but it wouldn't be something I'd be interested in rushing to vote in July. Thank you.
Counselor Rice-Hawkins, is your hand still up?
It is. Thanks. And a couple of my questions have been answered along the way. I just wanted to say to Counselor Pierce with the motion before us and to the rest of the counselors, that I appreciate that work's been done. It does strike me that five years ago, it's relatively a long time ago, and also this same council, several members advocated for putting Keno back up on the ballot two years after it failed by large margins in Concord because, you know, we wanted public input and wanted folks to have an opportunity to do that. So obviously, the solution that we've hit upon currently, which is to not take action here, has not worked for all community members and I think would be worth revisiting. Also, as a member of the Public Safety Advisory Board, I obviously, being a newer counselor, have not had a chance to look at this, and I'd be happy to read through the past materials, but I for one would be willing to give this a second look.
Counselor Pierce?
Just a question, I guess for the city solicitor. What was brought forward to the council in 2015? Was it a total prohibition? Was it, what was brought forward in 2015 for vote by the council?
2015, the restriction or limitation on fireworks was that there would be no fireworks from 11:00 PM to 10:00 AM. That was the restriction that was offered to the city council. And that was just, you know, a baseline presentation. And the city council had the option, authority to do whatever they want. We gave the council numerous options relative to prohibition, permissible, not permissible. And basically, the council ultimately decided not to adopt the ordinance.
Follow up, please?
Counselor Pierce?
So I guess where I'm confused and where I read the noise ordinance and all the things that we do or don't say about fireworks, we say in our noise ordinance...
You're muted.
I was unmuted and I muted myself to speak, so you should have enjoyed that. I guess where I'm confused is it seems as though our ordinances are at odds. And maybe this is something that if this ultimately does go to the Public Safety Committee, it can be talked about. But we very clearly say in our noise ordinance on what will be unlawful, unnecessarily loud noise, and so on and so forth. And, but we do not mention fireworks whatsoever. Again. So I'm a little confused. On one hand, we say you can't do this, but on the other hand, we're not looking to prohibit it. So I will leave it at that, and I guess unless someone wants to make another motion, I would ask that my motion stand and that we take a vote.
Counselor Hatfield?
Thank you. I've also had several constituents complain, and I have this issue right in my own neighborhood. And I did look for the minutes of the Public Safety Committee, and I wasn't able to find them. So I appreciate those materials being provided because I wasn't aware of what had come before the council. I would really appreciate digging into this a little bit more. And if Counselor Pierce, it sounds like maybe you aren't amenable to this, but I wonder if you'd be willing to revise your motion to be more along the lines of what Counselor Nyhan is suggesting, and I think several others, that we take some time and work with the city solicitor on this rather than bringing it back to the council so quickly in July? Because I do think that Counselor Kretovic makes a really good point that it is challenging for people to be able to weigh in right now. And this certainly would be something that we'd want to hear from, you know, as many people as possible about any options that we were considering.
If I may, Madam Chair, so if I withdraw my motion or if this is voted down, would we entertain another motion? What's the right way to do this then? I mean, I think expediency is important here. I don't think the city solicitor's office is going to have to do a lot of work to get something together. If five years the council voted down, nothing but a time limit between 11:00 and 10:00, you know, 11:30 to 10:00 AM, I'm not sure how far this will go. I don't want to waste a lot of people's times, people's time. I think it's important, but I don't want it to die totally. So either, if I withdraw my motion in second, would another counselor make that motion, or how do I proceed?
You can withdraw the motion in second and then make another motion. Or another counselor can make an emotion. Or you can amend the emotion you have now and have that seconded by the person who seconded your motion.
This is difficult. This is Counselor Nyhan speaking. I had my hand up, and sometimes it's difficult to recognize people. In direct response to Counselor Pierce, Counselor Pierce, if you withdraw your motion and the person making the second does the same, I will make the appropriate motion to refer this to legal counsel for additional input.
Okay, then I...
Cleanest, quickest, I would, versus to rescind your motion and second it also.
Since Counselor Pierce, and I withdraw my motion.
Thank you. And who seconded that?
I did. Hatfield seconded, and I'll withdraw that as well. Thank you.
And Counselor Nyhan, your hand is up?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to refer the current suspense item number one to our city solicitor for additional input.
Mattson second. Made in second. Any discussion? Seeing no hands. Clerk, are you ready to call the roll, please?
Yes. Mayor, Mayor Protem Bouchard.
Yes, to send it to the city solicitor.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fennessy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Yes.
Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Mattson?
Yes.
Counselor Nyhan?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
With a thanks to Counselor Nyhan, yes.
Counselor Rice-Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Warner?
Yes.
The motion passes, and this item will go to the city solicitor for an opinion. Thank you. And we're on the second suspense item, and I think the mayor is back. Maybe.
Yes, suspense to before us. It's both appointments to the Energy and Environment Advisory Committee. Can we have a motion to accept these now, these appointments?
Accept, second.
It sounded like we had a motion, and it was made by Counselor Warner, seconded by...
Bouchard?
It was just kind of a lot of, sorry. With that, I have Counselor Kretovic.
Thank you, Your Honor. It would be great if you could just make mention of the fact that some of the appointments for committees that typically happen in the spring have been delayed because of COVID-19 and the ability for people to be sworn in. I've had several people reach out also interested in committees, and I think my saying it over and over again isn't the same as your saying it, Your Honor. Thank you.
That's true.
I just said that. How's that?
Well said. Thank you.
Counselor Hatfield, did you have a comment? I apologize. Counselor Hatfield, did you have your hand up?
I just wanted to speak briefly in favor of both of these appointments. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fennessy?
I just wanted to say briefly that I am strongly in support of Ms. Forrest, who I know.
Great, great. Seeing no further comments. Madam Clerk, if you call a roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boulain?
Yes.
Counselor Champlin?
Yes.
Counselor Fennessy?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
Yes.
Counselor Keach?
Yes.
Counselor Kennison?
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Mattson?
Yes.
Counselor Nyhan?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Rice-Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Warner?
Yes. Thank you very much. With that, it takes us to the end of our regular scheduled meeting. Can I get a motion to go into a non-public session to discuss the manager's evaluation?
So move.
Which may second to go into non-public discussion manager's evaluation. Madam Clerk, if you call a roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boulain? Counselor Champlin?
Yes.
Counselor Fennessy?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
Yes.
Counselor Keach?
Yes.
Counselor Kennison?
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Mattson?
Yes.
Counselor Nyhan? Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Rice-Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Warner?
Yes. With that, thank you very much. We'll go into a non-public session. I just want to remind everybody, so if you're looking for the link to go to the next non-public, it was sent by the clerk, Ms. Bonafont, and you'd be looking for the meeting that would start at 8:30 PM, the non-public portion of the meeting. Okay? With that, we'll see you all. Thanks.